...
Mike Colman.
Here.
Bruce Gallarducci.
Here.
Bill Henderson.
Here.
Joe Palasino.
Here.
Joe Verdiucci.
Here.
Linda Petraselli.
Here.
B.J. Smithner.
Here.
Mary Betty Cookler.
Here.
Sister Thomas McBurnham.
Here.
Engineer Jose.
Here.
Urban Javory Collins.
Here.
Police Chief Chad King.
Here.
Fire Chief Phil Chino. South Virginia State Labor.
Here.
I think we're here, of course. Good to do.
Council wants to recognize Mr. Jay Stepp.
Cool. All right.
You came here to inquire about what the status is for Stepp's one Laurel Street?
I haven't talked to -- I actually have been talking to one of the contractors, local one. I haven't got chance to talk to him.
Well, Bruce told me he -- someone's -- they've got someone in line. It's over three years and the Stepp's been messed up for about thirty. It's a public safety issue. Probably more people use them than what's used there at our building per day. Well, cheese was replaced, what, twice in eight months?
I understand.
And I know, you understand, nothing's getting done.
The issue is, the issue is, when we first mentioned it before, we went to get them replaced, the bids were coming -- it came back, it was $60,000 roughly to get fixed, where it wasn't even our budget to do that. So, we're looking to -- and what you mentioned is what we also agree with, and we're going to try to see if we can get local contractors to be generous and to help us out and try to do it that way.
Well, if you take the $40,000 you want to put in this building, and the $27,000 you want to put in the bathrooms on Chartier Spark, I think you'll come up with money. Because you can put a shortage on this down in Chartier Spark, since it gets flooded all the time. And I just had a -- the last rain we had got flooded, like numerous other people, so I had plumbers come, and I put a backflow valve in. And I would like to see if I can get credit, not reimbursed, but just for the valve. And that's not asking for too much, considering it was $3,000 job.
Contact Lori.
She's contacted right now. She knows my --
By nothing. What will she be doing?
The brick wall on Maple Streets came into the creek again. Bad this time. And I'd like to see if something can get done about the parking on Maple Street there at the stop sign, because in May, I kept forgetting to bring it up on, we had a fire department come, and they had to back up three times because of people parking there too close. And the property owner there has -- it's rental property, which he has enough property there to put a couple parking spaces. So, in that bend there, you know, they walk the street. Now, with the wall caving in, the people that's parking there are backing up a little bit more. So, now the wall, it's getting tighter to exit the alley or come in because of the parking.
Did you look at parking a couple of years ago?
On the bend?
On the bend, at the stop sign.
Okay.
And there's a few other things. There's a lot of people. But the one I'd like to bring up, me and Lori took a walk around in September, I think it was, around the wall.
I think so, yeah.
That corner house is for sale. The one with the cat feces, remember?
The one with the cars parking on the --
The one that's for sale, that white duplex.
One with the cars parking on the corner there?
Yeah, under -- no, not that house. It's a duplex, it's for sale, on the corner of Maple Street and No Name Alley, okay? Where he dumping his charcoal, I told you.
Oh.
That guy's dumping his cat litter box on the sidewalk, and I've got photos, and it's all under his porch.
Dumping his cat litter box on the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, it's about four inches thick under his porch when you walk by.
Okay.
And I've got photos, it's a fresh stuff, if you're interested.
You don't know the address, do you?
Nope.
Okay, I'll go.
And I guess that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Let's recognize Bob Friar.
Hi, Bob Friar, Bridgeville. Again, as usual, we're talking about transportation flies coming up. This is a drawing I made from Pendott about three or four days ago. It primarily shows the seven-lane bridge over the creek. And they have the left turn stacking lane here going over Chartier Street, but I'm sure that Pendott opposes that feature right now, so don't assume that they're in favor of it. But the point I wanted to bring to your attention, this is going across the bridge, excuse me, they have, they're adding, I believe, one lane downstream and two lanes upstream. Going across the bridge, if you notice, there are two lanes that are totally restricted, where no one can get into them. The first one is going to North Bond 79, North Bond Road. And the second one primarily is going to Route 50 West, where they, for obvious reasons, they can head south on 79. But what I'm concerned about is, that only leaves one road to relieve the traffic congestion from Bridgeville into South Fead. And what I'm suggesting is, that you do this, to recommend this to them, that they take one of those, the lane going to Route 50 West, that that be allowed to be entered by cars, that'd be a bull purchase lane. And so, that Bridgeville would have two lanes relieving their traffic congestion, and it requires nothing more than moving this mountainous island back. I want to mention one other thing. When I, three years ago, offered a suggestion to Pendott to make this bridge seven lanes and to widen Chartier Street by one lane.
Oh, I said six lanes three years ago.
Or whatever it was.
Six years.
I was saying, really, it's six feet wide or something. The design that I gave primarily was to make, was to enhance traffic flow between the Bridgeville Business District and the South Fead Business District, and vice versa. What happened was, at least at this point, they didn't agree, Pendott seemed to not agree, had no interest in adding two more lanes to the South Fead Business District for about 8,000 feet, which would have helped us and helped South Fead, obviously. And seeing, and the same, that's why I'm so interested in the left turn stacking into Chartier Street. But what happened, the way the Pendott drawing shows now, all the emphasis is on getting traffic down Chartier Street, left across the bridge, and right toward I-79. Primarily, I think 75% of those cars or vehicles come from Duffel Park and Upper St. Clair. I'm certainly very interested in those people, but I'm more interested in the South Fead Bridgeville Business District. And I think, you guys consider, it's making this modification to that, it's not a major thing, but it would be, I think, very helpful to traffic flow throughout the community. And one other thing, you probably, I don't know if you received a letter from Cheryl Serianni, she's the head of Pendott right now. Sort of, the letter was written to me, and she was telling me the reasons why Pendott didn't agree that the left turn stacking lane should be constructed. I'm going to leave a copy of this. This is a letter that I wrote back to her, because I think the data is not accurate that Pendott has, and I very much would like, I'll give this to Lori, and I guess she'll give you copies to use.
I'll send it to her.
And I'd really like to see, try to get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council wants to recognize Lynn Ready, SPOs.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
You're here for what?
Thank you. I'm Lynn Ready, SPOs. Hi, we met, I live on Mount Street. I am here tonight to talk about something, and I understand I only have three minutes, but if there's any interest, would I be able to talk, answer questions or anything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You can take one of those in, pass them down. So, I'm here to talk about a possible ban, like, it would be more of a proactive ban on opening any pet stores in Bridgeville that would sell puppies. I don't know if you're aware, but there are over 100 municipalities across the country that actually have incorporated these bans, including the city of Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. And I have, I only have one of those, I don't want to waste too much paper. So, I have one of the copies of the bill for Pittsburgh and one for Philadelphia here. And so, basically, like I said, there are no pet stores right now in Bridgeville that I know of that sell puppies. Most puppies that are sold to pet stores come from puppy mills in the Midwest. I'm not sure how familiar you are with puppy mills. There was an article in Rolling Stone Magazine last year that was fantastic. I brought a copy of that. It lays it out in a lot of detail, how this industry works. It's a greedy industry that continues to breed puppies over and over again for profit, and there's no good care for the welfare of the animals. It's been well documented. I volunteer, I'm a volunteer district leader for the Humane Society of the United States for Congressional District 18, and the HSUS estimates that there are about 10,000 puppy mills in our country. And I have, have a lot of research, a lot of documents over the past couple of years, complaints, inspection reports from the USDA, which are hard to get now, because they weren't so hard to get last year. But I have collected and spoke to, spoken with a lot of people who have purchased these puppies that literally have been sick, and many have died in a couple of days of purchasing them, because they're very sick, they're inbred, they have a lot of health problems, and then the dogs just keep being bred and bred again. This is the list of jurisdictions with retail pet sale bans. Like I said, in Pennsylvania right now, the only two cities are Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, and I apologize, my ink has started to run out, so it's kind of like, sorry about that. But you can go on Best Friends Animal Society website and look up that. You could look it up by date, and you could look it up by state as well. There are several communities in Ohio, and there's actually a state build representative where T.Tye and I have been working on for the past, maybe, year, where we're trying to get this statewide. California was the first state to do it. We're hoping to be the second. Senator Gray Rushen Thaler is also introducing a similar bill in the Senate. They're being circulated for cosponsors right now, there's no actual bill number just yet. The reason that California was able to pass a statewide bill is that there were so many local bans in place. So, the more local bans we can get, the better chance of this thing will pass. But, like I said, I've collected a lot of complaints, and I've collected a lot of proof that shows that the puppies are in fact coming in from the Midwest. This is just a real quick little snippet, but if I could give this to our, this was a woman named Heather, who bought a puppy on September 9th, 2016. The puppy's been sick ever since the second day we had him. We purchased him on Friday, and by Saturday night, just like many others, he started coughing. We called the store that morning, they wanted him to bring us back, we brought him back. This should have been a warning sign that the sign is, oh, I'm sorry, that the store is selling sick animals. This goes on to talk about how the woman that bought it, possibly the puppy, spent literally thousands of dollars, and these puppies cost anywhere between $2,000 and, I'm seeing up to, close to $5,000. So, you can see, it's a very, could be a profitable business, but not a humane one. There are humane sewers in this area, Petland East Liberty and Petland Norman, both sell shelter and rescue dogs, which is fantastic, and also lower the venager rates. We put to sleep thousands of dogs every day in this country, and all of the shelters in our area, unfortunately, it's the same thing, there's just no space, it's not the shelter spot, it's a community problem, we just, we need it. This would help get it, this would help reduce those numbers, too. So, I, like I said, last thing, the last page of that packet are copies of transport certificates that you can see from Missouri, I believe, but I have pages and pages, pages of those. I just wanted to show you. That shows exactly where they came from, how old they are. They're only eight to 10 weeks old when they're taken from this mill, put on a truck, and shipped, what, is that, I think it's about 1,000 miles from here to Missouri, Kansas, Iowa, Nebraska, those are like the big states. So, that is what I'm asking of you, to please consider a ban. Like I said, it wouldn't affect any business in here in Bridgeville right now at all, it would just be like a preventative measure. So, any questions? I have a ton of stuff, like I said, I've collected, I'm willing to share, whatever you want to see, whatever I can email you or send you.
I know, and this isn't the first time, I know we've talked, and we mentioned Lori and Tom here, and we're looking at the legality of it, to see what it would take, the nuts and bolts of ordinance. As you said, we're trying to do it statewide, and I think there's an issue statewide, we're trying to figure out where, you know, cave-offs are.
Yeah, no, 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 no. If you like, and we have, from the first times that you've submitted this stuff to Lori, we've looked at it, and I've taken a look at it, certainly without disagreeing at all, with the merits of it. There are some concerns that we had, especially when we don't have one in Bridgeville, and I know you noted other states around the country, including Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, and I've come to look at the legal. There's a potential legality question for us, which is, and there has been actually litigation around the country in places where they have, as you can imagine, tried to enact these. In Pennsylvania, in particular, the way our state government hierarchy is structured, with the exception of places like Pittsburgh and Philly that have what's called home, or they want power to act on a state like, we're actually, there's a question about whether we have the authority under state law to regulate this, or whether it's more pro-legal or our Pennsylvania constitutional structure, something that has to be done at a state level. So, there's a concern with that, where we don't have one on the table here, a issue, it would invite a lawsuit if actually somebody did file for me, and we denied one, and since we don't have one, and since there is legislation brewing on the common law, my initial recommendation was not to expend all the resources at it at this time, but that's certainly a leading concern.
I would say, if there's a way we could do it, let's choose, it's two of our options, it makes sense, obviously.
You can certainly enact them, they are susceptible to those sorts of challenges.
Tom, is it due to discrimination of allowing a business in, or?
No, there's a question under Pennsylvania state law as to what sorts of things the local government are allowed to regulate in terms of business, because a lot of things are regulated on the state, are preempted by state law, specifically regulated or generally, there's an argument to be made that it's not within the zone of powers that we've been given to regulate on a local governmental level. If you can enact such an ordinance, there is a risk, and it has happened around the country, if somebody did file one, a challenge, and you would be in litigation about it.
Let's take a look at, I think that's a good idea, to see what we can do.
Sure.
Definitely worth taking a look.
What's the timeframe, Jason, in looking to submit, submit something through the state, or is it just, he has to get more buy-in?
I believe it's being introduced before Humane Lobby Day in Harrisburg, which is April 16th, so sometime in the next few weeks.
I think the state law, they're basically, like, considered.
Yes.
Call you guys.
Yes.
They don't sell puppies.
Okay.
No, call you guys and sell, like, Petland, they don't sell puppies, they just call them fish.
Oh, Pets Plus, plus, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't sell, there's no, there's no pet store in Bridgeville right now that sells puppies.
And that's calling.
Oh, oh, that's Pets Plus, okay. Yeah, so I don't think it would cost any money to restore anything like that.
No, we're not worried about that.
And we're not trying to affect businesses, like, so the businesses can still go in, it's just a matter of where they get it.
The money risk wouldn't be in enacting a ordinance, the money risk would be in, if it were challenged, then there was going to be associated with it.
And you said that somebody is around the country.
There have been lawsuits in other states around the country challenging local ordinances which have attempted to, these types of ordinances have attempted.
I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, maybe I --
We'll look at it, we'll look it up, too.
Okay. All right, any questions? Thanks, I just surrender.
Thank you very much. Monchea, under the law. How you doing? My cheetah, 2:33. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Postle on a nice article in the newspaper, and I congratulate you, congratulate you, and wish you best of luck. Lori, do you have a house down on Cheston, 236, I believe, greenhouse next to Rich Lawrence Auto, car which has been on that porch for like a year.
Next to Rich Lawrence Auto?
Yeah.
Lawrence Auto, okay.
And while you're here, I don't know, puppy mills, I've been wanting to smoke some classes. What's, I hear that you're taxing people with vacant properties. What's, what's going on with that?
It's inactive already, right? It's a different tax structure.
Basically, it's a tax structure for different people in the community.
It's your land, and then your building, so each piece of property has a separate tax structure.
Was never like that before?
No, it was still.
What's the reason behind that?
To spur development.
To spur development. So, people are -- How about if you own something in a flood lane, are you still liable for that property, even though you can't own the flood lane?
If you had properties such as you described, it would be valued less or have a very low value.
But you'd still be paying more, right?
Millage-wise, but not more than another comparable property elsewhere. If you have a property that has any challenge, that goes into its base value. What they've done here is they just have a different millage rate for a property versus the structure around the property, regardless of whether, wherever it's located, just by way the example you gave.
Are there other options?
Yeah, we're going to judge it the same as we always have, and just increase millage rate across the border.
Do you have any, do you have paperwork in that, Lori?
I just have to add the ordinance, I'll give you a copy of the ordinance.
Okay. I'm a little disappointed in that, because I own a couple of vacant properties, and it's going to cost me a little more money, and I'm a little upset about that. On Station Street, I see that they're putting the new meters up. There was never metered parking in front of the church, Methodist Church. I see there's going to be parking there, a metered parking there, now?
Well, if there was never metered parking there, then there's, the parking authorities should come to us.
They shouldn't came to you.
To adding metered parking on a street that was un-metered.
I know they, I know they lined it, but now somebody was telling me that it's metered, and I was just wondering.
We have a listing, I, in our codification book, I have a listing of all the streets, and which ones should be metered and shouldn't be metered. So, if they're putting meter, if they're marking them to put the, for the kiosks on a street that isn't listed in our codification book, then that isn't enforceable. So, if that's happening on, you said Station?
This is what I, this, I don't know firsthand, but this is what I was told.
Okay.
The gentleman at the house at Cheston Station, I'm a little upset, because he was told that that was going to be metered on, you know, opposite of him, which is in front of the Methodist Church.
And it wasn't metered?
It wasn't metered before, and if it isn't metered, and there's lines, and there should be signage saying that it's not metered, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, people weren't confused.
Right, right. They have to come and get approval from the Borough Council to add additional.
And they routinely do, so if they have, and it may have been in the straight of the right, because I was actually going to one of them recently, to see if it was the one you thought, we did one, they did one on Hickman Street, for example, last year.
Yeah, for two spaces.
Yeah.
That's thrown a lot, that's thrown a lot of people down on our end.
Right. I'll check.
It's going bad now because of the school, you know, I get a lot of those people going to the smokes and playing.
Yeah, yeah. I'll call them tomorrow and chat with them and make sure it's not happening.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Lori.
I just want to take your opportunity up to make a general note of suggestion to folks, with regard to code enforcement matters. Certainly, if you feel like the administration or council is not responding to things, nobody's saying, don't come to a public meeting, but would ask if you might first exhaust attempts to call Lori in the administration office with code complaints. There is an issue under code enforcement of sensitivity, even if somebody's violating or allegedly violating something of sensitivity to the person's privacy, if you have a chance. There's actually a structure that gives us a chance to allow folks to work things out privately before it becomes airing during the launch. So, would ask, just as a dignity matter and a protocol matter, folks can call the manager's office, give them an opportunity to try to address those matters before we possibly kind of out people.
I'm sorry, there was one more thing. Do you have an ordinance on dogs defecating, picking it up, people picking up their dogs?
At least, I know it's for parking.
Yeah, as far as, as far as people walking dogs, they're required to pick it up immediately. If it's with, in their yard area, it has to be picked up within 24 hours.
How about if I'm walking a dog down the street, and it poops on the sidewalk, and you just keep going and it poops laying there? Is there an ordinance for that?
Yeah, and if someone tells me, can tell me who they are, because I've had that happen before.
You sent a letter before.
If it's a German Shepherd.
Yes.
Is he doing the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll send him another one.
Thanks.
All right, on to our regular meeting. Mets, motion of the Borough Council regarding the Mets of February 12th, 2018 regular meeting as nominated. Bruce Gallarducci. Second to Joe Palasino. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2018-02, motion of the Borough Council regarding resolution number 2018-02, a resolution, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville confirming the application to P.A. Small Water and Sewer Program, with a grant in the amount of $188,293.28 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority, to be used for the 2018 full-length Mambo-to-Mambo line project. Total project cost is $212,109.74, the Borough is responsible for 15%, or $31,816.46. So, Bruce Gallarducci.
Second.
And B.J. Hott, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
2018 sanitary sewer excavation repair project. This was advertised and publicly opened on Thursday, March 8th, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. in the council chambers for the 2018 sanitary sewer excavation repair project, with the following bid results. Neander construction, 10% bid bond, for a bid of $190,840. Solar construction, bid bond 10%, amount of $224,650. State pipe services, bid bond 10%, amount of $269,940. And Osiris Enterprises, bid bond 10%, amount of $360,430. End of construction, 10% bid bond for a bid of $190,840. Solid construction, bid bond 10%, amount of $224,650. State pipe services, bid bond 10%, amount of $269.94, $269.94. And Osiris Enterprises, bid bond 10%, amount of $360,430. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the award to the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. End of construction incorporated, the amount of $190,840. Contention upon review of all required documentation by Engineer Sykes.
I shall move.
Nina Bucicelli?
Second.
And Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Balden Street Backwater Bound Project. These were advertised and publicly opened on Thursday, March 8th, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. In the council chambers for the Balden Street Backwater Bound Project with the following bid results. Osiris Enterprises, 10% bid bond, $76,800. Solid construction, bid bond of 10%, $84,700. And BAA Pipe Bursting LLC, 10% bid bond for $112,190. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the award of the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, Osiris Enterprises, in the amount of $67,800. Contention upon review of all required documentation by Engineer Sykes.
I shall move.
Nina Bucicelli?
Second.
And second by Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Bill List, motion of the Borough Council regarding the March 2018 bill list. Allo, Joe Rucci?
Sir.
And Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls. Motion of the Borough Council approving the payroll of March 16th, 2030 and April 6th, 2018.
So moved.
Bruce Calorucci?
Second.
And Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly reports. Motion to accept and pay any commission due to February 2018 real estate tax collector report. Allo, Joe Rucci?
Seconded.
Bruce.
Then seconded.
Bruce was.
No problem.
Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the January 2018 financial report. Allo, Joe Rucci?
Sir.
And Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the February 2018 police report.
So moved.
Is that Bill?
Yeah.
Bill Anderson and BJ Bott. All those opposed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the February 2018 zoning report.
So moved.
Second, Bill Anderson and Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Administration.
Good work, sir.
Finance, Joe?
I wrote all that. By the way, that's a wonderful report there.
There you go.
All right. Thanks very well.
Parks and Recreation.
Real quick, the park's scheduled to open on April 1st, weather permitting. We're going to get the first part of the year, that portage on the park because they don't want to turn the water on because it might freeze up and then we'd have a mess. And I was talking to a couple of public works people today and they said Charter's Park looks pretty good. They haven't cleaned up the restrooms yet. Looking to do that before we even park.
Joe, are they able to drive down and is that driveway okay?
That's what these places tell me.
Okay.
It's good, so.
They actually are, got some reclaim from the way you know.
Okay. Because I know normally at the end of the March, they, BAA tries to have some type of cleanup date.
Yeah, it's, it would be okay for them to come down or, you know, to schedule that. It's okay to do that.
Should they, when do you want them to call and ask you to call Germany or wherever you?
I normally do it, I try to wait until probably the third week of March. They usually do it that week. And then it takes the guys a few days to, you know, because they pull the pump out and everything, so.
Okay.
So by the end of the month, we're fine.
Couple of new people, so I'll kind of get them.
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't have, I'll just, I'll just do it. They can check with me and see if it's fine.
Thank you.
And first warning, the deadline for the next newsletter is April 9th, which is the next council meeting. Everybody heads up on that and that's all I have. Thanks, Joe.
I'm sorry, Joe, do you have any progress on the?
Congratulations planning the park.
No, we haven't done anything, we'll get together. What's the timeframe when this all comes back? Just to understand the progression.
I think what we need to sit down and lay out all the, all the issues and then we can put together a time frame.
Does it matter to schedule something then?
Yeah, we need to schedule something.
All right, Joe, just to, as a heads up, the BAA would like to be involved for obviously.
Public Works.
Mike.
Public Works Chairman.
Yes, I can make a comment before Nina. I did one in Pennsylvania, the crest of the hills, they killed down around. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Public Works Department. They did a wonderful job this winter. It was just great. And we all should be grateful.
Absolutely, thank you. Nina, Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the, the snow removal was at just now, as we're speaking, The, we have an overtime.
That's in February.
It's February, August, yes. February is sold, $29,732.20. For the best weather we have, I call this pretty darn good. Let's hope there. But it's no bad, I see, I see worse than this. This is no bad. We're looking $1,204.00. You know, it's not a big deal to, to please only Mrs. Falcone, but so many of us, which is definitely a very good job to, from Public Works, with no question. And sort of the, then the rest of Public Works, it's a regular routine, you know, fix the catch basin, fix the sinks, search Pennsylvania Avenue, sink or wash, clean parts, etc., etc., etc. Snow removal, of course, it's already in my first comment. If I may, and that's all I have for Public Works, Mr. Chairman. If I may, it's not, if I may, because it's not in this, I can wait on new, to remove again. That's not informal motion. I just want to remind some to this council. Some of the good things, maybe they were good when I was in council. The, some proceeds, let me pick up just one, okay? There isn't that many, but one in particular that really would like to be continued. That's not in a formal motion. Please remember that. I just spoke to Lori about it. I remember that every meeting after the election, that the pack was distributed to all the new members who come in. Of course, now, who came in, we all knew, even though we're here, okay? We all distribute the pack to everybody, the new member, the one who was sitting on. Why you think perhaps, perhaps Mrs. Bott, okay? I mean, it would be nice for her to have the pack to be incorporated with the conversation, even though it's one month, but still, the new council people. See, that's not informal motion. I would like that this will, will come back this way. Not necessarily, but maybe it's a good, a good way to do it. There is no, yeah, it is, there is no legal, they have to do that.
If there's no information, then information in it, they can certainly be included in the back.
Including, very simple, very simple.
Certainly.
You know what I mean, it is, it could be three brand new ones, never been in council.
Absolutely.
I mean, we all pretty much mess.
Well, it's been quite a while.
It's been quite a while. I think I would like to.
That's fine.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry to speak out of my time. Thank you.
No problem.
It's all right.
Public Safety, Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Public Safety Committee has met to, to police negotiating team to initiate negotiations for a new contract. We'll continue that process as we move forward. Only other thing I have is really to congratulate the chief again on keeping his batting average at 100% of solving crimes through social media. You know, if I could just say one thing, the public is a very powerful tool and the chief and the police department have leveraged the Bridgeville public brilliantly to help solve crimes and I commend you again for that, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Madam Mayor.
Mr. President. We've received an invitation from Solid Rock Revival Church on Dewey Avenue for March 24th. They're having a formal dedication of the building. And they've asked me to speak, but at that time I'll also be presenting a proclamation from, from the borough.
What's the date of that?
March 24th at 5:30 p.m. And our firemen are to be commended for having to leave their fish fry to go and assist the Carnegie Department that fired, that happened at PJ's. Something for them to have to.
How did Jay do?
Oh, excuse me, I've got PJ's on your mind because she's celebrating her 40th anniversary. We were just there the other, other night, but her official celebration will be in November. And the chief has also allowed me to share this letter with you from the United States Secret Service, February 6th, 2018. Chief Chad King, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the invaluable assistance and support for Secret Service protective operations provided by your personnel for the recent visit of Vice President Mike Pence. The efficiency of your department proved to be invaluable in ensuring the safety of both the protectees and other attendees at the events. Your officers' professionalism was evident throughout the visit at which multiple jurisdictions need to be covered. Their consistent attention to detail and hard work ensured that it was a safe and enjoyable event. It's an honor to work with the men and women of your department who provide and maintain a high level of security and safety for our leaders. The help and support that the Bridgeville Police Department provides to the security operations of the Secret Service is vital to their success. On behalf of the men and women of the Pittsburgh Field Office, please accept and pass along our deepest appreciation. We look forward to working with you again in the future. Sincerely, Timothy Burke, Special Agent in Charge of the Pittsburgh Field Office. Thank you.
Thanks, very good. Yes? Madam Mayor, Bill? Thank you very much. After that introduction.
I have a few things. First off, Mr. Cheeto, just to address some concerns with the suboxone clinics you mentioned, I do have some good news. We are down from seven clinics, we're now down to three. So for what that's worth, unless another one snuck in somewhere, but I only know of three at this point. The food drive which you mentioned last month was supposed to culminate on the 12th. We actually backed it up three more days to the 15th. We will be picking up the boxes on the 15th and all the departments involved will be taking the items down to Bethany's Church for the food bank. Should be noted, I've already had to go to a few locations, a library, a precious pond. I literally filled up my trier pickup truck with food once already, took it to a storage unit in Colorado Township that we're utilizing. So it's, looks like it's going to be a pretty good success. There will also be a pizza party at the school on the 14th, which each jurisdiction had local pizza shops. And we had big, big guys pizza donated 12 pizzas for the pizza party for the kids at school as each classroom and each grade level that donated the most gets to have a pizza party. So it'll be done on the 14th. We have our drug takeback box. We received it about a week or two ago. Hopefully, we are looking to get it installed maybe by Friday. We do have to have the road crew bolt it to the floor. That's one of the rules regarding having a box like that. It has to be in a common accessible area to the public, which will be in our lobby, and it has to be bolted to the floor. There is an instruction paper attached to the box that lists what can be deposited. Obviously, you can't put needles or aerosols or liquids in it strictly for pills. Also, they don't want anybody other than individuals bringing their medication down because what they found through these programs, some businesses will try to take advantage of this and bring mass quantities in to dispose of. But some of the other rules are when an individual comes in to deposit their medication, we're not allowed to ask them who they are or what they're putting in there. We just hope that they follow the rules. So as the container inside fills up, I'll weigh it, put it in a garbage bag, store it in the evidence room. And every quarter, I think it is, the Army Corps of Engineers or the National Guard, I think it's the National Guard, has a remote location which we take the items to, to have them disposed of properly. But we're hoping to have that in by Thursday or Friday this week.
Chad?
Yes?
Did they want you to leave the pills in the bottle or dump them in altogether in a plastic bag?
They didn't really say, but when you put them in the drop box, it goes into a Tupperware bin. I would say just leave them in the bottle. That way you don't have to touch them or anything. Because, you know, it's hard to tell with what's out there nowadays, how potent it can be. We had, the flu hit us hard last month. 10 out of the 12 officers came down with it. I was one of the two that avoided it somehow. But I think we lost close to a total of 25 shifts due to guys coming down with the flu. And not only that, but about a third of the department relapsed with an upper respiratory infection after recovering from the flu. So something in 19 years, I've never seen it hit like this, but it was bad. When it hit, it hit hard and it was bad. I think we're finally pulled through that. Earlier, as mentioned, I can expand a little bit more on the package stuff that we had on February 26th. Lady had a package delivered on Main Street and she actually had a video camera facing her porch where she received deliveries. And it wasn't the greatest video, if anybody saw it on our Facebook page, but I put the video out with some still shots. And it took till about March 9th before we got a solid credible tip. I actually had a guy flag me down last Thursday late in the shift on Washington Avenue saying, hey, you know, he was asking if we had solved it yet. And told him no, I said we had a few leads that didn't pan out. He said, well, you know, a kid had a skateboard. He said, I know there's a house on Bauer Hill Road where I've seen a kid walk to with a skateboard. He goes, I don't know if that's good info, but I've seen a kid on a skateboard. So it didn't seem like much information, but in proximity to Main Street and Cook School Road where it intersects with Bauer Hill, it wasn't that far away. Just so happens, this house, within the past year, had converted into an apartment building. Now unfortunately, I had been in that same house last April for a drug overdose death. It has since converted to an apartment, so we looked up our landlord-tenant listings and sure enough, that gave us a name of the tenant of the upper apartment. So I went there on Friday to make contact and lo and behold, when I walked up on the back porch, the box that he had taken was sitting on his back porch with the lady's shipping address on it. We call that a clue.
Apparently, apparently he's not on Facebook.
I'll get to that. So came back, got some guys together, we got a search warrant. We went back to the apartment later that morning and sure enough, the item that he took was a 15-pound weighted blanket, which is normally used for kids to help them sleep better at night. Kids that have trouble sleeping, anxiety and whatnot. So we were able to seize the blanket and we, of course, drugs and paraphernalia. And the gentleman had given himself a haircut prior to us coming back the second time out on his porch. But I had asked him, I showed him the video, I said, you know, do you know who that is? And he was just staring like, you know, and he fessed up later on. But he didn't see the Facebook because he didn't have access to Wi-Fi, so he didn't see himself until that day. But no matter the information, sometimes the smallest tidbits, you know, hey, I saw a kid on a skateboard go to this house, you know, it panned out for us, you know? So it, it worked once again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Solicitor.
Yeah, we're at a report, we did, per the safety committee's request, draft the ordinance amendments for Mill Street Park. And we looked up at the pet board, as you requested, and the material back on that. I didn't include the report, the Quiexon report that we had commissioned on Murray Avenue. It does, as we anticipated, note that it's not, doesn't meet the criteria, but at this point it's viable. And then finally, I think you're, you're going to tell Joe and Lori and I increasingly, things are going to start happening, we're frequent registered department consent decree, the, the super consent decree over the next month. So I have a meeting on Monday with the solicitors groups, managers have been in on a morning meetings, getting towards the next round. Much fun, Joe.
Thanks. Engineer Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. President. We cover most of the items in the engineer's report. For note, Lori and I attended a meeting at Alpha Center about a week and a half ago to go over some repairs that are needed on the interceptor that goes to C-53 and C-5310 and C-54. Those are one of the things, I think, one of the things that we've already started doing is videotaping the section of the interceptor down on Commercial Board. We started doing that after the. We started doing that after the January 12th storm event to make sure there was bats in the lawn, so that to help out with the backflow preventers. The other thing that we have out there is the, we have the Route 50 corridor meeting on the 29th of March that we've had on.
March 29?
March 29, yes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Chief's not here. Southbridge, Dan Miller.
Nothing to report.
Mary White, Bridgewater Historical Society.
I'm here. You all know who I am, and you know where I live, and you know where I'm coming from this week. Maybe. I'm starting out with Borough because of what happened to me this week. I'm going up Station Street, Bill, Chief, Bill. I'm in the left lane to make the left turn onto Washington Avenue. The car coming from Station the other way got through fine, I'm hauling up, a good thing it was going up and I could put my foot on the brake. The car in that lane cut right in front of me and went left and went down Washington Avenue. And I sat there for about a minute, no policeman, darn it! But he came right from that right-hand lane, right in front of me.
So you're saying he made a left-hand turn to the right-hand?
Left, he came from the right lane to make a left turn. So maybe they need a bigger sign, or maybe they need to learn how to read, but. The one gentleman brought up about the steps from Hollywood Place down to Laurel. Of course, we had that privilege when we were young, and we used it quite a bit when the Lithuanians took over the Mathers Church, which became St. Anthony's. The women used to come up those steps, four o'clock Sunday afternoon, went over to the church walking, of course, during the Depression, they did that, and they use that walkway, that stairway, all the time. We had people in Friday from Montana, grew up here in Bridgeville, and were absolutely astonished that we had not replaced that. So, I'm putting it back in your hands, because you've already heard from us about it anyway. The man and I got into a talk about it, said we'd even give $25 each if we could get some companies to help do it, or, you know, help, help. Anyway, the other thing that I was going to ask about tonight, I haven't made my appointment yet with Lori, I'm on a very, very personal budget this year at my home, and that includes a car, and that includes a lot of work, like the holly trees that have to be cut back, and on and on, there's, and I want to know how to figure my Borough tax under the new system that no one knows about.
I can help you do that.
But yeah, that's, I want to make an appointment with you to get that done. The other thing on the way, of Borough report, please keep the pressure, if you can, nag, pend up about some kind of highway system from Upper St. Clair across, rather than through here, but across that way. One other thing, I heard that the Women's Club is going to be torn down, that's next to the church that was sold. That was built in 1918, 1919, after World War II, by the women of this community. And I can remember when they had parties, they had picnics, they had reunions, they had programs. Back then, they couldn't even vote, women didn't get the vote until 1921. So there is someplace to go and something to do other than stay home and clean the house and take care of the kids and all that. Bridgeville had a very bad reputation for a while of tearing it down or burning it down, and I hate to see something like the Women's Club go down. Besides that, I went to kindergarten now. There was no kindergarten in the public school system at that time. On the other side of the fence, I want you to be aware that we are pursuing a lot of new and more, hopefully, interesting to the public, and we did get good coverage this time from South Hills Living, and Katie Green, the editor, is going to get my sincere thanks. We will be coming up with some new ideas and of trying to get a lot more people coming to Bridgeville, a lot more people coming to see us. We're starting to work with the Bridgeville Public Library together to see if we can get some of this done. At the end of this month, the last Tuesday of March, this booklet that I showed everybody, not everybody, but it's here for you to look at, this is West, no, it isn't West Newton, it's, I'm sorry, Cement City in Denora, and it is, they are cement houses, and they've been there for 100 years. And I had cousins that lived there, we used to go there all the time to visit them, so I'm very familiar with that area. If you ever get a chance, do the tour. If you get a chance to come down to the History Center, no, sorry, Fire Hall that night, he's a tremendous speaker, he uses tremendous photographs. And the, as you were right, a couple meetings ago, Thomas Edison played a big role in this. Let's see, I only have a couple more things real quick, like. We are, of course, helping, we're almost filled to the top now, Chief, and I hope we finish getting what we, that's a great idea, we thank you, we're glad to help. This is the time of year when we do the annual art contest for third and fourth graders. We have yet to get any other school involved except South Fayette. And so the end, middle end of April, you'll see their paintings and all the businesses in Bridgeville that we can get to. We're going to be holding a two, make sure this is right, two-day bake sale, the Thursday and Friday, right before Mother's Day. I'm sorry to, the tickets to the Penguin game, we went over the top, we sold all the tickets. Bridgeville people have been exceedingly helpful. And we want to thank our volunteer fire department. I don't know if everyone knows, the Women's Auxiliary that the other day brought us two huge photograph albums, the history of the Bridgeville Volunteer Fire Department, and they have some great photographs, so stop in. And I ran out of things to tell you, but we're starting to move fast forward, and we want you all to take part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a small comment, to bear, thank you, sir. You mentioned the, Mary, you mentioned the, the clubhouse. Now, if really would be history, I think it'd take much longer than whenever they was built. The Borough could make, I don't see too many historical things in Bridgeville, maybe up to Newbury, Bridgeville. The Borough, the council could make a, some kind of restriction on that, like April 4th. You couldn't even got three if the tree is 150-year-old. You're not allowed, you can build a run, but you don't get, that's an example. So I don't think for council to make an ordinance on historical whatever may be, that's kind of early, it has to be much, much later than, it has to be hundreds of years or something like that.
Well, this is mentally where things are thousands of years old.
Yeah, that is right. So, that was when I'm younger. So actually, somebody feels bad to turn someday, young, it's baby, that, in comparison, yeah, this was relative, you answered very well, the general. But sure, we feel bad when we see something like that here and there. But party, there you go. I, I brought Mr. Davis next to me, Mr. Davis wasn't a, a dasher, he's a worker, years and years and years. We could call that historical, but it's not, but the air was short, but I need a party, so. And there is many other things on, on land, they're later on in years. I'll make some my comment, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, to allow me to.
Anytime.
I just wanted to say, since Chief Chili is not here, on behalf of the fire department, to remind everyone of the fish fry this Friday from 4 to 7, nine a.m. to take out. I think the mayor's manning the function of the takeout again, going to talk to her, but yeah, it's doing really well, we really appreciate all this.
It's really fast this year, like really fast. Everybody I talked to was like, yeah, before I would sit down, Dennis chasing me with my food.
Hey, we try.
One of my volunteers, just, volunteers, she heads up the goodies department, women and men. Anyway, tomorrow night at the railroad station, we're going to do, I think it's 1948, 49, but there was a football team in that two-year period, that 10 or 12 or 14 of those young men got scholarships because of that footballs. So tomorrow night at 7, at the railroad station.
The rail, the rail yard?
No. Because next month, we're going to George Washington. And see, we've, we've been getting high school kids from Chargers Houston, and we want to try and get South Fayette, Chargers Natalie to come too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Bridgeville Planning Commission, who wants this one, you or?
Well, either you, the album's, it's kind of.
I could shoot from the hip, would you?
I sure will.
Last two meetings, we've started reviewing the Bridgeville Comprehensive Plan, kind of going back over that, documents, 10 years old, 10-plus years old.
13 years.
For the, for us new guys, it was kind of interesting to kind of look at it, start talking about some of the things, you know, there's a bunch of things on there that, you know, had been completed over the last 10, 13 years, there's still some stuff out there that, you know, maybe the planning commission can kind of grab on to and run with, so. We had elections in the January meeting, John McCann's still going to be chairperson, I'll be vice chair, and Tim Nath is going to be secretary. Anything else to add?
Well, the comment I'd like to make in the comprehensive plan, it's 13-year-old, and when we review up to a few pages, actually, just for the record, council, this council, the previous council, the previous council in 13, they've done a lot on the comprehensive plan. I was surprised myself, many things, the government of Bridgeville from 13 years ago up to today, how much they've done on the comprehensive plan, we should be proud, actually. We've done so much, and the lawyer said, how much? A lot of things we did. I even shared that with Lori, you don't think, but so much was done in 13, 13 years, that I'm very proud of this government and the governments before us.
All right, thanks, Bill. Earl Andrew.
I provide my written report if anyone has any questions, and I just want to let everyone know that the fire department and the Borough will be hosting the History County Churches Park on Saturday, March 31st, starting at 11 a.m.
I know somebody from the libraries here, does he have anything?
Yes, he was.
Yeah. I know you're not on the agenda with the house, but.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Ben Warren Beck, I'm the library director, for those of you who don't know. I just wanted to share, we recently finished our annual reporting, going to provide a more formal report, but for 2017, total digital and electronic, we circulated 93,189 items, which is an eight and a half percent increase from 2016. We also, our total program attendance was 11,400, which was also an eight and a half percent increase. The library is also now circulating mobile hotspots, so for anyone who does not have internet at home, or if you're traveling, you can stop in and borrow one for a week and take it with you, and then you'll have Wi-Fi the whole time you're gone. The Fresno library are having their spring used book sale. It starts Thursday evening, April 5th, for members. It's all day, April 6th and 7th, and then there's a bag sale on Sunday, April 8th. And also, we are offering a rent rebate workshop on Monday, April 9th, from 10 to noon, so for anyone who's interested, who needs assistance completing those, you're welcome to come to the library.
It's a correction, it's property tax rebate and rent rebate, it's both combined to 1,000 for those who are eligible. Those are the people who rent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Old business. New business. Only once, twice, wish you to adjourn. Thank you.